The call to me to order this meeting of the Hammond Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health being held in the Townhouse Auditorium. May twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, six P M. This meeting is being conducted in person remotely using video conferencing technology as approved by Governor in April, lasting until July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Please stand for the President. Is anyone recording the meeting? Others than us. Anybody on there recording?
Is there plans to extend that date?
I don't know. And you do after that, I think we have that back, the old way. Where a member can be promoted, but the chairman can't be.
Right.
And it doesn't.
Physically have a.
You have to physically have a quorum.
Kind of have a quorum present and then you can do remote. One, one, in this case, it would have to be two here and one remote.
After the fifteen.
Correct. Unless they.
You can't form a quorum.
Right. I think unless they change it.
Minutes of April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty.
I got May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
What are the actual minutes down to one?
I got April twenty-fifth.
Now I'll look at the.
Oh, yeah, see it over here too.
Well, that's because it's definitely.
Oh, makes sense. Second.
Next item on the agenda is our traditional organization after the.
There you go.
Organization, we have a motion for chairman.
Well, I guess I'll fall on my shoulders for a second. Don, I think you've done an outstanding job these last two terms as chairman. John, last time, kind of reminded us of a old way of doing things of having the outgoing member assume the, the chair role. And I think it would be fair at this point to nominate John as a chair going forward for the final year of his term. And make the motion to have John. Assume the role of chair.
I'll second your motion. All in favor of John being the chair for the next year? Congratulations, you want to take the official powerful chair, you want to operate there for the rest of the meeting.
I'll hang on, thank you, Don. I'm making a motion to nominate Craig as chairman of the Board of Health.
One second.
You have your last chance to back out.
I'll, I'll do my best in assuming the role.
Well, you need to, you would need to personally investigate every separate call.
That's a good idea.
Didn't he have to dig it?
I think you're right. Does he have the shovel, is there a town shovel?
I got one of those like pole stall diggers, that work.
Oh, that's old.
It's old school.
Minister. Second, go ahead, you're the chair. So does it move?
No. All was in papers, Craig being chairman.
So that happens in the break.
All of a sudden. On favor. Congratulations, Craig.
Thanks, Dan.
Now you can be sworn out, I need sworn in.
All right.
The A's on assignments. The current list that we have from before, I think it worked pretty well for this board. Does anybody have a burning need to change or something?
I'm comfortable with everybody assuming what they have based on the knowledge they already have in those departments and look forward.
Yeah, all good.
All right, so just review then. Don, you have Stormwater Advisory and Congress. I have planning, highway, capital planning and housing. You wait, Frank. School Committee, Park and Rec, Library. Bob, you're responsible for her management place and fire.
Okay.
Already that I didn't name the assessors or. I think any I didn't name, Bob, you would kind of liaison to them and come back with.
Good.
Okay, perhaps then a memo out to different departments, state of the board side, keep the. Well, next on the agenda, Jean.
Hey, Don.
And then you had.
Yes, yes. So what do you have?
Um, some research that we have, we have the agreement that was signed before. And you probably have. And those state the agreement that you weigh off into a claim.
I believe what it says is the rate of future claims from that particular contamination that happened. Fifty, what it later states is that. And so. Handled. The damage to that, to that point. If you look at your contract again.
For water, probably.
Yeah, I put it in this week's agenda. I put it in this week's agenda. All right. Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah.
We all have a topic. Okay. Page three.
Here it is.
Page three of the contract. Well, I'm going to tell you where it is. Page three, five lines up from the bottom.
Searching, I'm searching the one driver, the cloud.
Well, you have it in your.
It's in your. So here it is.
Notwithstanding the foregoing, you both came in and the residence execution of this agreement shall not operate as the residence leased the town for future damages which result from any future runoff or. Not caused by or related to the. Did you ask me?
It says it includes future self-contamination, right?
Well, that's okay, that's okay. That's all right. And you asked me, John, last time, if I could.
Why did we stop to get a file?
I'm sorry.
We asked for a final copy, we finally got it. Quote from Paul.
Yes.
So just want to clarification on the way this is worded. I do see where it says including future salt contamination, not caused by or related to so salt contamination. So that last part there, not caused by or related to the salt contamination. So is that the original contamination issue that's not related to? So, so is that how this is being worded that you understand? And you think there's a new salt contamination issue?
There was new contamination, so this contract, this contract says that you will supply water to me within certain guidelines which were exhibits to the.
Which contract are you reading now?
I'm, I'm reading the one from two thousand fifteen. And then it has to comply with state regulations for drinking water, those are the state regulations, and they were exhibits that probably you don't have, I can supply those if you need them.
Second sentence.
But on page one.
Number seven.
Section one, so third of the way down the paragraph. The water to be supplied with the new well shall be pure and healthful, meaning that the water shall comply with contaminant levels as set forth in the two thousand fourteen. Standards and guidelines for contaminants in Massachusetts drinking water of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. As may be updated and amended in the future, which are here attached here to a specific C. And subject to limitations set forth in paragraph four, shall be insufficient quantity to supply domestic consumption needs of the resident. As well as the other two residents similarly impacted.
I guess, so what I'm questioning. The words of salt contamination is parentheses, which means it's a definition somewhere. I don't, I'm looking for the definition of what that means in consents to this agreement. And that's what I was trying to think at the end here, where it says.
Paragraph two. Middle of the paragraph. The water from the residence well currently does not meet applicable drinking water standards as a result of salt runoff and infiltration from the salt shed maintained by the town. And adjacent to the residence property, the salt contamination is what they're calling it, it's a general. It's a general description. It does not contain any element of, of all the analytes that were.
Right, so it, it's grouping that whole instance as salt contamination, right? Right, so that was my question on the, on the, the contract part where you were reading there. I'm just trying to understand the terms where it says not caused by or related to the salt contamination. So that's referencing the old problem, right? And that's where, you know. To your point where I was saying, including future salt contamination, not caused by or related to the salt contamination. So you, the way you're reading it, I just want to make sure that I understand, is you think there's a new salt contamination because it's not related to the original one. And there's.
We know that there was. We know that there was.
We know that there was a new salt contamination?
We knew that there was a new contamination.
You continue.
Because of the failure of the T P W well. And that's why you would just, that's what.
T V W?
Yeah, the D P W.
Oh, D P W, I'm sorry.
The garage well. What are you shaking your head about? I don't understand.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
So John's shaking his head.
I'm shaking my head because there was no failure of the new well we drilled at T P W. We were concerned with the levels and you rightly brought it to our attention saying, I'm not happy with the numbers, including the manganese. So that's where the town went forward to hook up to the Scenic Valley Water District and provide a better source of water. But contamination from. The well that was drilled at Highway did not provide contamination. It didn't provide what people were concerned with, maybe a high quality of portable water, but was not contaminated water like you saw with the original problem from the highway spill.
The levels were not the same, but it did not, it did not follow the drinking water regulations of the state.
There were reasonable numbers from the state, as you know, our consultant Tom Pooters said, back in the original analysis, some are guidelines and some are standards. There's a lot of dispute on that. I think what Craig's point here, and I'll paraphrase for him, is that he's saying there was a salt contamination that was the problem. Created by infiltration into the groundwater from the salt shed. And that led to some pretty high numbers, including your house, which are pretty high. And that's why we got into the whole thing about, and you brought your experts, North Carolina maybe, was the guy. I think there's some professor down there. That talked about the possibility of micro holes, you know, you know, micro holes and piping and center of that. When new water came in, it might expose these.
Right.
Causing leaking, and that was a big concern for you.
Right.
It looks good now, but when you put fresh water in, also, boom, it can be a mobile.
That's right. That's right.
So that's why we said, okay, give us a full list. And from our understanding, this was the bottom line. This was everything it was going to take to repair. And I see the wording for this as being, okay, this is going to repair everything caused by the salt contamination.
But again, the salt contamination is the umbrella sort of term for contamination. It doesn't, as I said, it doesn't list each individual analyte. And if you, if you wanted me to take up that figure and that research, I have to tell you that I've been dealing with this for, since two thousand. And do you remember what year it was?
I'm going to say it was probably the first time I can could probably help you.
Well, I can tell you.
Two thousand eleven.
Two thousand and ten, I have an email that talks about actually.
I think the email I had was from when you submitted the Board of Health report on August seventeenth, two thousand eleven. When you filed.
Something that I just, that I presented this in July of two thousand and ten. Yeah, it's been a very long time. And, you know, the point is, is that there's damage that caused some of it, it's cumulative, some of it was before the two thousand and fifteen. And I actually have from talking with your member, Paul, the engineer. He actually supplied a full packet of information to you, where you required me to have three estimates for every single portion of the project.
But that was your statement right there, you just said, your statement right there, some of the damage was caused prior to the fourteen, which is released in this agreement.
We, it's, it's. Yes, that's the problem, is that we had. We had word actually from the professor we're talking about, that said that this is a closed system. And therefore the water could not have affected the heating system of the boiler. Later, what we discovered was that there was, there were pin noses, corrosion in the copper pipes, leading to the regulators and the six regulators on the system. Because those failed, it sprayed water onto the regulators, and that's why you have the picture that you do. So this is the, this is the hot water heater that we came to replace. This was most recently. As a problem, this was done two years ago, I have a copy of the check that you wrote to me. And a copy of the installation by Sterling Plumbing, and actually, there's a little balance on that, they did get a credit.
Was that valve leaking on that water heater by any chance, you know?
Did the valve leak? Yes, the valve. They couldn't even, they, they couldn't even drain it, they couldn't even drain it to remove it because it wouldn't, they just couldn't, and there's a note from the plumber there. They had to remove other things in, in the furnace room in order to get this out of there.
How often do you have the furnace serviced? How often do you have the furnace serviced?
Oh, um. I have them called, like every couple of years, they've told me that with a, a gas system, it doesn't really need the same as, as something that's, you know, moved by oil. But these are the two pictures, this is the, this is the furnace, and as you can see, there's copper here. Okay, so a copper leaked and sprayed on to the regulators. And this is why. Plumbers have not wanted to take these regulators off because they're afraid they're going to be opening up a can of worms here. They take this off, now they're, now they're going to look at a system that's failed.
Now, when you had the plumber look at it, and they, they said they wouldn't touch that, did they condemn the furnace too, or just the regulators? Do you know?
Their, what they, their comment to me was, whatever you see on the outside is what, this, this is what the water, the water that's inside the system is what caused this damage. So unless they cut the boiler open, you know.
And do you know how old that furnace, that boiler is currently? When was that installed? That was installed in the.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the water, so, right, right, that's a good point. This is my sister Suzanne, I witnessed this for John, Don, Craig and Bob. You're right, that's a good point, so this was.
So the hot water heater that you, that they installed after the two thousand fifteen. The new well was put in, and the new well contaminated and destroyed. So it's continuing. Even the new well was continuing to contaminate and fail the appliances in the house. The new washing machine, that you got, my dishwasher, your dishwasher, that you got. It continued, the new well continued to contaminate the appliances in the home in the house. So, Suzanne.
And actually, and actually, it prevented me from selling the home. And it has prevented me from selling a home for a long time, so not only was there the personal, living with water that you couldn't drink. Showering with it, stun your eyes, it got into your thighs. There's a problem with the manganese level on the newer well. I have grandchildren, exposure of manganese over ten day period of time for any child under a year old causes neurological problems.
By the door, when you mean, two thousand fifteen?
Yeah, what was done after that? And it was something like. I don't know how many times over that contamination level. That this new well brought to me.
Yeah, it looks like in twenty twenty when the numbers really shot up, I, I do see all elevated numbers here. In the manganese, it's specifically what you're talking about. I don't know what the regulation is though for manganese, I just see in twenty twenty.
I don't have a copy of it, but I believe the E P A level is, I think it's point oh five, and I think you might see point three there.
Oh, seven, nine, one, six, one, four.
I think.
Six, nine, six, six, two, oh.
Five was, anything more than point oh five was, is what they base that ten day caution on.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is here, point oh five is the little.
Yeah, we looked at different systems like reverse osmosis, which. Had problems because of all the excess particulate that takes out the system. And these are guidelines, so that's loose. I want to go back to the original point that we were talking about here is, was there a release of the town? If you're saying this was. Certainly during the time of ninety-nine, till the water system, that was exposed to some pretty bad water that caused the damage. You would see the bulk of damage to that, would have been during the time when you were giving.
I, I'd like to say something, since two thousand twenty, since those numbers have shot up again and continued contamination has come from the new well. All of the new items that were placed in our home, her dishwasher, washing machine, you go and look at any of the toilets, though, any plumbing fixture that is in that home. It is destroyed again in a matter of two years. Okay, so we can sit here and talk all about, oh, we released from that claim, it could have been damaged from that. You know what, it very well could have, but I will also tell you the damage that has occurred from the new well in just the two years that it's been in. She is not asking for all the fixtures to be replaced, which she could. I would invite you over to go and look at them, the house is not sellable the way it is. The toilets, the dishwashers rusted, these are not normal occurrences, I live in Hammond myself, I have a well myself, I know how things operate in a home. These are not normal occurrences. This poor woman has had anxiety attacks and been in the hospital for over a decade now, on and off about this situation. She, that house is way too big for her, she needs to sell it, this has prevented her, this has been preventing her from selling this. For many, many years now, because the water's not drinkable. I lived in that home for a while, do you know what my children had to do? We had to take Poland Springs bottles of water that you guys provided and paid for to shower, to bathe, to wash dishes. The water, what, you weren't even able to wash dishes, the water was that bad, because you would literally taste salt on everything. This problem has been ongoing, and I, I get very frustrated with you, John, personally, like you a lot, but your comment to her. About when she answered the question, no, she didn't know you were continuing to talk, she does not need to be bullied here, she's been through enough, she's an elderly woman, she does, this is enough.
Carolyn, you know, my point is not to bully anybody.
The way you said it was very.
Well, I apologize for that. You know, I've been here and I've been trying to, at the town has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's a fair. And I know it's frustrating, Jean, I know it's frustrating for you, frustrating for McDonald's, everybody down the world as well. We want to make it right, if there's a way, I would enjoy the board, try and make a way, we can do something. But again, this just has to go through the process. I think provided my personal.
Soundbite is every step of the way, please.
Jean, just for clarification, I want to go back to what I was asking earlier. You think the contamination of the boiler is from a new contamination issue based on the new well?
I will show you these pictures, please.
I, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
No, I get it.
Yes. Okay. Two years ago, this was put in, you paid for it.
Right.
I'm sorry, two years ago. This is what happened in two years.
Okay, it's from the new. You're correct, you're correct.
So, yeah, as I was saying, if this is something that the board can justify doing, or recommend doing. There's a process in place for it, I know you want to move quickly. Sometimes it doesn't go that way, you've been extremely patient with us, and I think, I said this to you many, I want to say many times. You've attended our meetings more than almost anybody in town. And I thank you many times for your patience in this, we wouldn't get this from a lot of people. I remember you recall Benny saying one time, boy, Jean, if it was me, I don't know if I would have had your patience. Thank you for that.
So what does she get for that? That's all well and good that she's patient, she has health issues and needs to sell her home, the water needs to be drinkable, the furnace needs to be fixed, the other items need to be replaced. She's been waiting, John, hang on, she's been waiting for years to be able to sell this home, she cannot afford it. If she loses her home because she cannot sell it right now, if she loses her home because she cannot sell it. And I don't mean sell it because it doesn't look great, I'm saying sell it because it does not have drinkable water. We're going to have a bigger problem on our hands when the housing market crashes, or she loses the home, this is a much bigger issue, she needs to sell the home. Listen, I worked in compliance departments, legal departments, I'm a businesswoman, I understand process. I also understand that there are exceptions that can happen around processes when everyone at the table understands that there's been an injustice. And that even you yourself are now explaining the fact that everyone understands, she's been patient, she's been patient, she's not going to continue to be a doormat.
And I thought that, girl, what I was trying to say, and continue on whatever I'm saying is, if this board can come up with a way to be. Again, compliant, fair to Jean, we will, let us look over what we can do to help out.
And when will be now?
So I guess more of a fair question here is, this guy. I don't know. The operators in this valley, an institution of the faith of town. Right, and I would, I would think that. Given they are limited resources. Not toward the thing, it's understandable, but at some point, for another, this is not like.
So.
Let me finish with what I'm saying, because honestly, Jean, you speak very well, and I think you've been very clear. But honestly, I was trying to speak a couple of times, and I keep getting interrupted. What I want to say here is, I'd like to recommend to our board to find a way to solve this problem. And solve it expeditiously, rather than dragging it out. I like what you brought before, me personally, because this provides us more to see than what we see sometimes in the email. It's been unfortunate that due to circumstances, both on our part and your part, we haven't been able to have a good face to face to this point. Or whatever, that's what's been happening, honestly, in our world in the past two years. It's been turned upside down. We don't want to turn upside down anymore. I certainly recommend to our board that we look for a way that can be in compliance with the agreement. And in compliance with your situation as well.
I, I think, just to give my opinion on this, based on everything I've read and reading the history, there's been a lot of back and forth. And I think, based on what Jean's saying, is the new well caused contamination issues. And it states here that not, including future salt contamination, not caused by the salt contamination. So the original agreement was remedied by the new water source. The new water source looked like it caused problems, and we're seeing that in the numbers, because they're, they're clearly showing elevated numbers.
Which is the reason the town went forward with another.
Correct, and now we're hooked up to Scenic Valley, which is much, is a very good water.
Just to be clear, hopefully you're experiencing decent water at this point. So that.
We, we have quotes here for new, new boilers. We we have quotes here for new new boilers. These are installed, ready to go a hundred percent. You guys are good to go with that. I saw the two, so they're they're comparable, so.
Let's see if I can bring forth a way that we can, again, the key part here and that's been a laser. It's about funding and compliance. We aren't like the city of. Boston or something like that where they can dip into, oh, here's a hundred thousand. You saw how long it took us to get funding for this.
Is there still money in that budget under self contamination?
Not like this.
The original one was appropriation at town meeting. So it was approved by the voters to appropriate the money to pay for the mediation. So that's how that was covered the first time.
Yeah, my thought here would be. As we look that we appropriated ARPA money for this to resolve the Main Street water contamination. Is this part that would be appropriate as part of resolving the Main Street water contamination? That's a, that's a, if that's the case, that's something we can do.
Well, this. I'd have to call. Be unusual.
I I just want to clarify one thing. When you say expeditious and I can appreciate using a word like that, I use words like that myself. What are we talking here? Like, what is the next step? Is this simply a conversation that you guys have offline to be able to discuss if that is an option?
We don't have conversations.
Can't have that.
We do is here on.
Okay.
I think, as I said, what I'm seeing here is I like the case you presented. I'd like to discuss with the board and our town administrator, how can something like this be funded properly? I don't want to, I would not like to say to you, hey, you have to wait until town meeting in the fall.
Yeah, no.
I'm sure you would like that either.
Yeah, no, she needs to sell.
You know, if this were something, as Craig said, if this was a. Two thousand dollar piece, well, maybe there is money in the Main Street water account or something like this. For an amount like this that you're looking for. We, I don't want to say have to be creative, but we have to find a good legal source for it that we can justify to the accounts and to the offices. And if we can do that, I personally would recommend to the board that we go ahead and do it. And that would be something that we would take up on the next meeting or so.
What is the next meeting?
We meet every week. And I'm wondering. It won't be Tuesday.
Tuesday next week.
And you'll you're going to call and just. This would be an unusual expense, so I would have to call the State Office of Federal Funds in Boston. To get clearance from them. To spend ARPA money. They'd have to approve that, so, but I will call tomorrow morning.
To see if it's still, if it's coordinated with our water expansion.
So. I mean, the rule of the Treasury Department is. The funding that we have from Washington must use for, must be used for government services. So. You can see where those words might not extend this far. If we can't use ARPA funds and the board wants to move forward, we'll have to look for other means.
I mean, so this, what did they tell you about the, I mean, I know going through personally work wise, it's tough getting our salaries. What are they telling you about a new?
A system this size could take three weeks.
To commit.
Go ahead and get it coming in. Maybe we resolve by July. Big celebration on the fourth.
Freedom. Freedom in the house, freedom from the bad water.
Well, hopefully you're free from bad water now. Please, you know, turn on the tap. I get an aeration problem has gone away a little bit, not as foamy as it was. So if that's all done, we'll stop your house by the glass of water.
Oh, please. That would be wonderful lemonade.
Make lemonade out of lemons.
Again, I appreciate it. Thank you for meeting us halfway.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, also maybe some. We could also get some numbers of what's left in our current accounts as well. This way we qualify, we have Main Street water remediation money that's appropriate for the town. We also have Board of Health revolving which we've used for this expense in the past as well. I think you maybe combined a few things. Do you, does the board feel this is inappropriate? Absolutely. Okay, so let's work hard to get a number we can get together.
And I'll just try to clarify. I thought it was a new issue as well and I wanted for it to stay there. So.
Okay. Moving at green communities.
Well, we wanted to keep the discussion going on this. I did ask. The building commissioner his view, which I put in the packet for you. And then I also. Went to the Mark Robinsky, who was the coordinator for the program in Western Mass, asked for his thoughts. And so you have both comments there in your packet. Also included. What Mark sent to me, the list of communities that have adopted the Green Communities Program. And.
So there's two hundred and ninety nine of them statewide.
Yeah.
So there's only. Sixty outliers.
Right, sixty outliers.
Those rebels, yeah.
We're part of the same fifteen years that don't have a number of street or street.
In connection with this.
There's a couple I saw like thousand people.
In connection with this, National Grid has hired a company. To come and do a fleet analysis. For. Any town within their jurisdiction, free. And and basically recommend. The way vehicles should be purchased in the future. Should they be gasoline engine or diesel? Should they be hybrid or should they be electric? So.
And that would go to one of the criteria that they have.
It will go to one of the criteria. So I said, you know, it's free. Come on in and take a look, so.
Get all these things. I just worry about this. I think some of the things Obie talked about is that you don't want to obligate. The town to other things. There were time in the building code. That they were, if you went to a certain way, you were obligating people to put splitter systems in their homes, et cetera. So just be cautious that we don't open a door to a room we don't want to be in.
Yeah, so I got a lot of thoughts. I've been doing a lot of research on this. Originally, I was in favor a hundred percent of green communities and I started researching more on it. And I'm fifty fifty right now. I went through all the criteria that they recommended that you have to pass five different things to pass. And the first guidance that you need is a creation of a as of right by law in the town. And that as of right by law would be like Don had mentioned the other week about designated the landfill as a solar right of way. By law, which would obviously have to get passed at town meeting for the town to adopt the by law. The three criteria for the as of right by law are renewable or alternative energy generation facilities. Renewable or alternative energy research and development, which that's not going to happen. And renewable or alternative energy manufacturing facilities. So pretty much we're looking at solar generation. So we'd have to designate a section of property. For that, if the landfill fits that criteria, that that could wipe that away. But if that doesn't fit, then we're looking at another town piece of property that we'd have to designate.
Right, and you're the okay with the fact that we are actually running it per se. We have another agency doing it. I mean. You know, does the town have to have a bit of a buy-in in having that property besides just losing the property?
So the guidance, the second guidance that they recommend or require is adopt an expedited application and pervert process. Usually they say this goes hand in hand with your your right of by law. So those pretty much go together. The third thing was kind of interesting to me was establishing an energy use baseline. You need to create an ERP. Which is an energy reduction plan. And you have to put in a comprehensive program designed to reduce the baseline by twenty percent within five years. All right, my question on that is. Do we have to hire a consultant to conduct an ERP?
No, but this is, I I have experience with that. I basically your town administrator does that. There's a computer dedicated to this purpose that UMass Amherst. You get the account there. Your utility companies automatically post the data to that computer. And other indicators of energy use, mostly bills. Kilowatt hour usage and stuff like that. You collect and you basically feed it into the computer. You establish your baseline. We we use this much kilowatt hours of of electricity now. And then over five years, and there's no penalty if you don't don't achieve it, but over five years. They expect you to reduce energy consumption townwide by twenty percent. When I was in Beckett, we actually received an award from them. Because the town in reduced their energy consumption over thirty percent within the time period.
Expect you to or.
You're expected to do it. There's no penalty if you don't achieve it. But obviously, you know, you you we make an effort to achieve it, then they give you the design. Once you are admitted to the program, you get the so-called designation grant. Town would get probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To assess the needs and set a plan to go forward. Obviously, once you've done that, then you can apply for grant funding. So-called action grants. If we don't get. The state earmark for windows, for example, we would apply to the program up to two hundred and fifty thousand a year. To change out some of these these older windows. So I mean, that that's how it works and.
It's it. They said that after five or six years, if you failed to meet your twenty percent, that they. You maybe need to provide a new ERP. I think it's just all of it, yeah, so just. I guess.
I don't think there's a big stick here involved. I think it's it's the state. And it's a little different from the way the state has always been. Trying to assist communities in reducing energy consumption. Changing out the more expensive consumers of energy for less consumption. And using their money to do it.
And schools don't come for this.
Well, we can include the school. We can include the school. Wilbraham joined the program but did not include the school. Well, we could do two things. We could include the town's Green Meadow School. Or we could approach the town of Wilbraham and say, let's jointly. Include the entire system.
This is totally one age from the normal state thing, Don. This is instead of the unfunded mandate, this is actually a funded non mandate.
Yeah. It's a funded non mandate.
So there's a couple other.
Sure, this is from Boston? Are you sure?
We're from Boston. We're here to help. Yeah, I know.
So the the fourth thing that criteria is your communities must purchase only fuel efficient vehicles for municipal or whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practical. Okay, that's pretty easy to do.
And that's what that's, that's what the electric company will do.
They'll give you a plan for which vehicles. Can be useful. I mean, you're not going to buy an electric fire truck. You're not going to buy a hybrid. Grader for for the highway department, but. For example, and I've already talked with the police chief about this, whether we join the program or not. The police department ought to be moving towards at least the fuel efficient vehicles, hybrids or electrics for administrators. And then he told me that both East Long Meadow and Wilbraham have actually put hybrids into their patrol fleet. So if they're doing that. Chances are, you know, they don't have any very many chases anymore. And the hybrids have plenty of plenty of pets, so.
Well, that's actually something I was going to discuss later when we talk about the vehicles, you know, what what their use is. Kind of like feeding back what you saw in the capital planning discussion. But, okay, so Craig, is this something?
There's still one more that, there's one little caveat on the last one. So the the fifth criteria is you need a stretch code adoption process. And that's the one that I'm a little concerned about because. The the new climate focused energy code that was created in twenty twenty one, the Climate Energy Act. They're still developing new code alongside the stretch energy code. They said, however, the specifies code must include net zero building performance standards and a definition of net zero building. So my concern is, I don't think if we maintain this building, we're ever going to get net zero.
Right.
So I don't know if we fall into that process of that. There was also the thing, I think Wendell sent us. Insurance issues, but something, a claim was made to a building, structural fire, natural disaster, whatever. The insurance company wouldn't rebuild it up to the stretch code only to mass state code. So then you're out that gap of whatever cost that would be.
I think that's true.
Yeah.
The other point to be made here is if the stretch code is adopted and if it becomes some something of a burden. Town meeting can always vote to rescind it. It removes you from the program, but you can go back to the basic code.
There's no penalty for being removed or something?
No, you don't have to pay them back the money. So. I mean, that's the way out if some. Somehow there's a natural disaster and a lot of damage and then it seems as though. Well, the insurance company isn't going to cover up to the stretch code standards.
I think Wendell made the reference of data nonsense.
All right.
I mean, what I, frankly, what I see is. A singular singular advantage is money. Money to do energy consumption. Improvements rather than having the town funded themselves, so.
For some of those that comes to talking about. You know, so Craig, a little more research on that, please.
I mean, yeah.
I mean, the stretch thing concerns me. The net zero concerns me. You know, is that, because I don't know enough about the current building. We know we have a subdivision proposal coming up for seven homes on Chapin Road. And it's going to limit what that guy can do.
So yeah, the stretch codes concerns, then if the town would approve the by law for solar too.
It's going to only be done in the next phase needed.
Net zero, though, more applicable to new construction.
Right.
Rather than old existing buildings, although another experience I had in Southampton was. We got funding from the Green Communities Program. To put insulation in the ceiling. I think we were somewhere around R forty and we went up to the the current standard, which is R sixty something, I think.
One thing we've done unfortunately, Pam recalled, we've already done the light upgrade a couple of times here. We actually did a big insulation project and everyone put the air conditioning in upstairs as well. So I think we've done most of the mass save was paying quite a bit towards the electric upgrades, et cetera. Memorial Day comes up a week from today. Have we heard from anybody?
Well, there's a folder inside John's agenda folder. I've talked with Brandon. And sent some emails. He called either Jared and then also Jeff has asked me, the more of them has been working to help him with this. I've talked to some lawyers. There was a demarcation. Agreement that that needs to sign. There, I've got a rough draft. Rough draft.
We only have one pin.
The program. And.
What did you cut?
I have heard from the Girl Scouts and the Cub Scouts and the Department. We don't know about the band yet. I have not looked at.
What did you contact?
Uh, Brandon.
No, Ben, the military man.
Oh, I didn't, oh, I asked Brandon.
And we usually reach out to Margaret and ask the kids.
Well.
I know Margaret's gone, but and. I did get a new name from Al.
It's Tom?
No, it's some new name. Is anyone going to the?
Yeah, I think, wait, you're talking about the.
We see somebody from the district, we can ask him a multi. I'll get in touch with the band later.
You got that, Ben?
Did you tell Brandon we're having this band on the?
I did not.
Is everybody Margaret? Have we heard like Ra or anybody?
A question to Brandon, yes, Derek Park and my teams. I don't know about Ra, but Park and my teams, we are going to manage. So I imagine we're all in contact and I sent that invitation out. Yeah, but. I think so many of us are so accustomed to the grill that. I'm going to say, okay, you know, go see guys.
Which heard, I saw father Mark and he was going to walk in and.
I contacted everyone, but I have not.
Including Skip?
So, I mean, I would.
Sure, there'll be a tremendous representation from the.
Buns as well. The buns as well.
Police departments providing the ice cream?
That came from now.
From the V W?
No. Maybe Brian. Oh, two thousand nineteen. But I will reach out to a number of people.
Now, let's try to confirm that the the school is the biggest thing. All right, website, official posting site. Bob, that's something you're going to report. Is it this one station that's meeting?
Uh yes, but I'm gonna move it to the to the following week, but. What's in order right now is. To get the word to everybody. I did mention it last meeting, but I'm gonna I'm gonna provide some training. As to how the staff person who is in charge of doing the postings can can post on the web. I did saw that this morning with the. With Conservation Commission members. I think we have that situation all squared away now.
So they're gonna put an agenda up rather than in the news section?
That's right.
Two some petition from you in hotel meeting. Well, I think, Greg, you expressed it best. At the meeting. We have current litigation. I think it'd be inappropriate at this point for us to do anything until. That situation, anything we do right now, I think would skew litigation. John, your experience is.
I was gonna say, let's check with the.
With Jesse.
With Jesse first to see.
If anything, I think it would probably want to come from Jesse or our attorney. So.
Let me just check with Jesse first.
Oh, we need an update anyway.
Yeah, we need an update for him, plus he probably doesn't even know that this passed, so we should tell him.
Oh, we're running out of money. If he wants to take his time until July, that's fine. Uh governments, no timeline for fire chief, uh police chief evaluation.
I I did send out the two copies of uh the form that we use. Uh to both chiefs. Actually, I just glanced at email. Later in the day, I think the police chief has already submitted it, so I think he sent it back already, so. Told them both that that's the first step. And then once. We get a chance to look at what they've submitted, then the selectmen. Will conduct a review similar to what you did with the highway superintendent.
Okay, and you're working on yours. If the board would not mind, we bring that up right now, we could be fire, so we can get back to the station.
He's gonna have to go and jump to. Right, so basically, Ed, I just want you to come in and in a public forum and talk about the Kibbe Fire a little bit. Uh maybe how things went for your department, your your um. Strategic operations, you know, we don't have fire hydrants in town, so we rely a lot on drafting and mutual aid. Um kind of what you thought went well, maybe what we can improve on as a town, and then what we as a town can do to help. You know, the fire department in future events, such as something like this, and we. Fortunately, we don't see big fires all the time, but you know, in the event that something happens, we want to make sure we can learn from anything that has happened to go forward.
You um. We don't see very many large fires. This was. Your commercial fire, most of our cars, if you happen to be residential. The things that went well for us, I think, was our mutual aid response. Um we did set up a large supply on the Summers Road Bridge. Um we had difficulty at first with our truck drafting and Summers was there instantly. They uh went around us and set lines into the river and they became the main. Engine drafting to fill all the tankers. We had nine separate communities here with tanker trucks. And they. Summers and all the responding communities did. I can't say enough about as well as our own firefighters. It went for the fire it was as hot as it was. Um it went very well. Arriving on arrival, there's a lot of white smoke. You don't usually see that with a structured fire. Usually it's dark gray. Um you can kind of predict what's going on. White smoke. Even pulling up, I say, this is a rush fire, you know, because that's that's generally what you'll get with white smoke. But the the fire load inside the building was so intense. Um I he had production of the camp firewood. I don't know if you're familiar, maybe you've seen at grocery stores, it's wrapped in plastic. Uh small little bundles. He had that stacked on skids. Uh three skids, you know, four by four skid, three skids deep and three skids high on one side of the wall. We had additional firewood on the other side of the wall. Um this is all kiln dried firewood. This isn't stuff that was dried outside. It's hard drying this kiln up there. Um so the fire load was just immense and that that firewood got going. I would say within five minutes it was through the roof of that. Of that building. The problem with that. The way the building was constructed is it it was a church originally that he purchased. As a kit from another, I think somewhere in Burnfield or Sturridge. Um but had had iron trusses, steel trusses going over and then the purlings in between were wood construction two by eights. Um and there's no thermal barrier. Like in a Butler building, you'd normally see. Steel construction with the insulation going over each each purling. This was um wood, so the roof failure was rather quick. Um the wood was exposed, it burnt and down came the metal sheathing. Um the metal roof, metal siding, and once that came down, it laid right on top of piles of firewood. It continuously, you know, burned hot. So once it covered firewood, we weren't really successful at getting water on the fire. Um so we made a call to Charlie, I meant to come in with an excavator and actually pull the metal out so we could get at the. Get at the fire. And once that happened, we found out how deep the fire, the camp firewood was. I spoke to the owner of the property, Mark Kibbe, he said that. We had a six tractor trailer loads of of wood processed inside the building. So um it was. It was good. Uh Wilbraham came with their ladder truck, so once the roof was compromised, they were able to flow water from up above. And I would say by the end of night, we. Traveled with tankers and and. Put two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water on that fire.
Guys are out there all day and all night, pretty much.
Yeah, we're there for nine hours.
Was there ever any concern about the solar field next door?
No, the solar field was was really far away. Um we had. National grid, I I think I could say it was the only problem that we had. We waited an hour for them to come. There is a three phase service on the building. Four hundred eighty volt. That I saw since I got there, so I was able to disconnect from the outside, but it was still attached to the building. So. You know, an hour, I think, is a little.
A little excessive for, especially at the sides of that.
Fire service bought their rehab bus up for firefighters. Um B P came to to ask them to come this for runoff or a lot of runoff of water. Just to make sure, you know, I meant like what you were saying.
And how about your crew or anybody else? Everybody, no injuries or anything?
No, no injuries. Um we had a lot of, you know, as you see, I I've come forth with you with some younger firefighters. In the past year, so we had a lot of young guys there. Jack, this was their first big fire, so it was a good experience for them and they worked, they worked hard. But the only issue I think was Wilbraham's ladder truck, we did have a cylinder rupture. Uh not hundred percent sure it was not propane, but there was a ball of fire.
Some type of fuel.
Yeah, it did damage cylinder, tipped their ladder. And that was probably the only.
You said we had trouble drafting with ours?
Yeah, where was, um I believe it was after looking at maybe the seal on the other side. We don't use often, might have been a little dry, could perhaps been. You know, when you're drafting, you're sucking all that air out of that tube. If you're pulling air from somewhere else, you can use that. Resorption, so. It might have just, it doesn't take much. I mean, we're vertically lifting a column of six inch water, which is pretty impressive. Um but if there's if there's any little thing goes wrong.
Did it suck the fish up too?
No, the strainer on the body. Check the other dry hydrants, just we we do check the dry hydrants. It wasn't, it was. Probably, I'm gonna guess, equipment failure. I mean, we drafted with the last Monday. They're out practicing on that same location tonight, this evening.
Um you say same location on the vehicle that you couldn't or in the does the site?
Same vehicle, same location.
So if there's a problem, we can get that fixed. If there's some mechanical failure.
Already changed the gasket.
Okay, cool. Now, as far as the other drafting sites in town, I mean, I know we have the one here that's well above water.
Yeah, let me back up.
Sorry, go ahead.
I I don't wanna say, I mean. When you have a situation like that and you have multiple tankers pulling in behind you, it's a very stressful situation. So I I'm sure, I'm confident that my guys could have figured it out in a few more minutes. But we don't have that kind of drive. Summers was right there, willing to jump in, so that's.
Seconds matter.
Yes, that's, I'm not saying, you know, that there's some kind of crazy problem. Sounds like a great level of communication cooperation, you know, the. You know, I was very, very impressed in every time it showed up.
So a lot has to say about the trainings you do every Monday night, you know, goes a long way to training. You said you have a lot of younger staff, so. I think the fact that you guys are out there every Monday practicing training, going through drills, really really helps.
We have free in the academy that should be graduating.
Awesome.
In communications, there were no issues between. Different departments, et cetera. There had one core needed area.
So so if you can imagine, we had a fire that that large or larger home. Um they're usually on residential street. This was a longer road, probably four mile off. You know, off the road, but the the area around it was very large. There was so much room to move around. We could stack tankers up there, three waiting, dump two tankers at once. We have three drop tanks on the ground. Um each tank held three thousand gallons of water, so you know, we were very efficient with the tankers. And and the staging apparatuses, there's there's so much room up there. It's down, it's down, very good thing that that happened.
Was there a pause determined or was that just?
State Farm, which was not contacted, neither the company.
Eddie Lawson, I think we saw a report, you mentioned repairs coming along. Is that something? Budget wise, are you able to take care of it? Do you transfer?
Um we may need a transfer. We did lose our primary pump on engine two recently, last week. I think it's in the thing of sixteen hundred dollars for that, but I'm gonna try to give you a bit of budget and then see what I can. I can do to get that through. Asking.
Who would say at this point, you know, we have two that. Perhaps it might be line line availability at that point or.
And you're like. And the um your question was the other guy.
As far as, you know, their drafting locations, I know we have the one here. That's above water, you know. Are there other ones that maybe we could? Do something with, you know, I think, I don't I don't know what's the other term, but maybe it's a case where we can use some ARCA funds to kind of make sure. That our our dry hydrants are, you know, underwater, ready to go in in a need.
The one on the bridge may be able to be relocated to the other side of the bridge. It seems to be a little bit deeper on that side. But I I feel as if every body of water we have, that we have permission, that everybody gives us permission, especially some kind of property.
Right.
Um to do. We have. Done.
Okay.
I have to say again that any fire we have as a rural fireway, the difference between us and. And say that our surrounding towns that have the hydrants is. We have to do a lot more work. We have to do a lot more prep. We're responsible for a lot more, responsible for that build site, responsible for that dump site. All these trucks are trucking our water to our supply. And then once we get it there, we have to draft it again out of standing pond, so. There's probably three times as much work for us to do to extinguish a fire that size. Especially that that fire.
How long does it take when you're drafting from the river to fill these truck?
Well, if if we had to start from the beginning and and hook up to the hydra.
No, no, you have a line going. Can you bring the next one out from the next one out?
We can generally do about five minutes.
There's about three hundred gallons, six hundred gallons?
Uh each tanker, the the regular tankers are commonly hold three thousand.
Three thousand.
I have one from Ellington, four thousand. Ours holds twenty five hundred.
Is there ever a possibility that if you had that long line of tankers? Just for one could go depending on where you are, holders in the nearest hydrant or adjacent town?
Yeah, so if we weren't able to keep up with the hydrants, we could open up a second fill site, absolutely. Um to break to break the cluster up, but when that's that's sort of what I was getting at. We were lucky, we were off the road. If this was, say, um South Road or Summers Road, if it was out on the road. That that would just have to be closed down and then where do you turn the tankers around? It it gets a lot more planning and that's where the ideal. Um would be for two fill sites, two separate loops, keep the trucks a little bit separated. You know.
And that's something you plan for, you say?
Well, well, I mean, it's hard to plan for every call we fire, but yeah, I mean. I I wish we could put them on the schedule. But yeah, we we figure that out and sometimes it's like, how far are we away from Wilbraham's hydra and by Oakland Street? Yeah, those are our, those are our fill sites, actually.
But all mutually towns respond.
Um the only one that didn't respond was Barnesville because they're thinking about the surf. Yeah, Palmer, Brimfield, Muggs, though, Owen, Tim, West Stafford, someone else.
You know, I would propose that we get a list from the other town. Have Pam draft a letter, thank you. Other response, a quick response.
I I am drafting letters as well.
Okay, we I think we'd like to do that support selection too.
And you were in command on the fire ground?
Ed, I thank you for your crew, your whole team and everybody, you know, the dedication to the towns. Appreciate it.
I think, hate to say it, but I mean, everybody saw the job you did, the coordination. The fact that, you know, you're in the busiest spot in town, Summers Road. And there was no problem. I went there a couple of times. I mean, traffic flowed through the trucks. Thank you, Gary, for letting everybody use his parking lot. It was almost like you were doing a drill. It was so well coordinated. I think people were thinking, who else could do training? Until you got down to Kitty's and I feel sorry for Kitty. That's a tremendous loss to them. Great job by you coordinating all these other towns.
Oh, I have a lot of help. I can, I, you know, all my officers, firefighters, other chiefs, although the chiefs from other towns were in there, especially Summers.
Well, it's collecting you, I mean, just by, this goes to show what volunteers can do. You guys did a great job. Put that in yourself, the evaluation.
Thanks for coming, Ed.
Oh, well, that's that's something. I I've been out there when it was. Full, I don't know. There's another one in Texas, Travis.
They're pretty close to finding Jimmy Hoffa in the bottom of it. Giant state.
Okay, uh I I put this out. I'm I'm gonna present the proposal next week. We have a government study committee. It basically is all part of the succession planning. I mean, a lot of towns are doing this. You know, we've got very qualified people in key positions that are elected positions in some of the towns. What the people who have had the experience. Uh are very concerned that in the election, you get a popularity contest, you don't get an experienced person and so on. Because of the complexity and the and the intricacy, a lot of these things now the government that they're going, they're moving to elect. I'm elected to a point, and so I got maybe sort of a government study committee just gonna look at it. You know, and there may be some other things we might want to do with different boards and stuff, but it wouldn't hurt to look.
The board, it does lead toward that charter type thing, and I think you may have actually had a conversation with my father back in the day. There was something he was always concerned about, like you said, it might be a popularity contest. We've been extremely fortunate. That the people they've elected have been well qualified.
In state.
In state.
Still here.
It's a job, it's a thankless job, but nobody wants it. But it's a tremendous concern.
I think it's a good idea.
One day, general licenses finally. One day general licenses, finally. Right, with the right, what dates do we have?
All right, just go, okay.
I'm just.
Twenty twenty three. Well, yeah, well, I'll go with the cover sheet, June fourth at the VFW. For a retirement party. June fifth at the VFW family reunion. June eleventh at the VFW family reunion. June twelfth, the VFW college graduation. June twenty fifth, the VFW wedding, all of these are twelve o'clock, noon, twelve midnight, in the pavilion. Across the.
I will, we approve the June fourth, June fifth, June eleventh, June twelfth, and June twenty fifth request for one day license at the VFW.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Did we set, did we set dates for uh, the evaluations for the police department?
Well, we gotta wait till they.
Okay, no official date.
We have a request for a one day general license for a mobile food truck. For ice cream sales batch incorporated, is that the place over? Do you have any lawnmower shops?
I like ice cream.
I think next to, um, next to, I think it is, June fourth at the town hall. Who likes ice cream?
What are they doing?
They're gonna bring a food truck here on June fourth, this human has to do probably.
Make a motion to approve the one day permit for ice cream truck for June fourth. Oh.
No, it's nice.
Let's, is that different?
Yeah.
A second.
On favor.
Hi.
And we have two requests for one day permits from the senior center. One day permit in support of the Alzheimer's Association on June twenty first, June twenty third, or seventh. And a one day permit for a fundraising dinner Saturday, August sixth, and five to nine.
I will, we approve the request of the senior center for a one day permit in support of the Alzheimer's Association on June twenty first. And a one day permit for a fundraiser dinner on August second, or twenty two.
Second.
Do we wave the.
And so this is the official Sunday license request. So we have here a request for a Sunday entertainment license for a great horse. And so this has been verified by the chief of police. He has to, he has to mark. All right. Uh, we have a letter to sign for Officer Gura as. Step down from the police department, we'd like to thank her for years of service and let her board this line. Fiber optic grant, Bob, you want to give us a little heads up on that?
Uh, the town applied for a grant under the community compact program. For two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The focus is to connect town buildings, but in the process, we're obviously going to be doing the kind of work that will enable a larger project. And uh, I have to say, I was a little bit surprised, but we did, we were funded for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I signed the contract and gave it to Pam, and um, the chair of the board has to sign it, so you have it there, yes, I see, you have it there, and it'll go in, it needs to be in by the thirtieth of May, and they will send the money, it's not one of these programs where you front the money, uh, they will deposit the money into the town's bank account.
Do they look for any type of.
I get an authorization from the board to sign this uh, grant.
Oh, second.
All favor.
Hi. Do we need to verify any of the work that's being done, or was this here's money, use it for your hookups?
No strings so far.
So, how does this factor into what you're doing, Craig, with the uh, just the like, how would you bring it in?
So this is gonna be good, we actually have a meeting tomorrow with the fiber optic committee to discuss how we want to proceed. Um, in my opinion, this would be great to establish the um, the take rates, the poll inspections, and see the the feasibility of actually bringing fiber to hand, and it will, it will cover that initial cost to to whip city for, you know, the inspections and the polls, like I said. And again, determining take rate. I think it's a, I think it's a positive step without, you know, affecting any of the tax base.
So after the second vote at town meeting, now the committee is gonna go forward and prepare what next, what next to be done.
Yeah.
All right. Do you need anything else from this board for that committee, or?
Not at the moment.
No.
All right, uh, correspondent. I'd like to actually see, Don, we have a letter about flagging graves, we used to get this from Art Booth all the time, from Don Talbot, that he will be flagging all veterans' graves hopefully by the start of Memorial Day. We thank him, VFW for their efforts and all this as well, I did see that the highway department flagged the season from Memorial Day through the Fourth of July, and thank them for their efforts. Um, sometimes I would like to see if Don would like to attend one of our meetings, like I thank him personally, hear what their plans are. We extend an invitation. Selectmen reports.
Um, well, like I just mentioned, we have the fiber optic committees meeting tomorrow, just to go over a couple of things, next steps. Parks is meeting tomorrow night as well, strategic planning met last week. I finally settled on a mission statement, and they're working on wording now, I'm sorry, on a vision statement, I said that. And they're working towards their mission statement, and there's, there's some different verbiage and stuff that they're working through. Um, next meeting is scheduled for June twenty second, but that may be brought sooner because we, when canceled, Mars is gonna try to facilitate a sooner meeting.
I'd like to thank Khan, um, working with Parks for the application for the tree removal at Memorial Park, hopefully get that completed by the end of this year. Bob, did you get a chance to look into that uh, library email I sent? Request for the bottles filling station?
I've read it, I haven't, I haven't looked into it, uh, it would be a town expense, and obviously the selectmen have to authorize it.
That's what I was.
Right. No, I think.
Great thing, but again, I'd like, I think.
The building is under the selectmen's control, so you'd have to, yeah, you'd have to.
Whatever we can do to.
Authorize it.
All right, Bob, rest of your report, please.
Uh, yes, town accountant reports that the review of the annual audit uh, must be postponed for personal reasons. He's going to tell me, uh, he's gonna give me a date, we had it set for June sixth, it's gonna be postponed a little further. Conservation Commission Zoom issues are resolved as of this morning, and we tested the system. And so, um, their meeting in June, uh, on a Wednesday, uh, is is going to be uh, cast over Zoom. And we're going to, again, retest the system on Wednesday morning before that meeting, just to make sure there are no more glitches.
Okay, so we have a meeting, there's a parker at meeting tomorrow night.
Yes.
And there's a planning meeting Wednesday night.
Right.
Do you think both those boards will be using Zoom?
I'm not aware that either one will be using Zoom.
If they want to, is Molly available?
Molly is available, and I let all department heads know that she was, um, but I don't get the questions from people.
Well, I do plan as liaison of the planning, I do plan on going to that one, Craig, or where your schedule like the park for which, if you have parks.
Yeah, I'm kinda going.
You know, so.
I normally ask, uh, when I know that there's a meeting coming, do you want me to set up a Zoom uh, call, and uh.
I would think, just from a personal standpoint, I think this, this initial planning meeting would be a good one to be.
It'd be good.
And I'm happy to, you reach out to the commander, I'm available if they need an operator to be there at that meeting as well.
Um.
Oh, and speaking of parks, there, hey, anybody in Zoom land?
Yeah.
Bring your resume forward.
I guess, we'll be talking about that tomorrow, it's on their agenda.
And we do have two licenses to use, so.
Great.
Conservation Commission has a license, a pro license, we have the town's pro license, so.
Um, almost like we had the upstairs one and the downstairs one, basically.
Well, yeah. Uh, had a department head and staff meeting on the eleventh, the next department head and staff meeting is gonna focus on the transition to using the website as a, the posting, uh, le- legal posting, uh, location.
Just, um, reference to that real quick, Bob, does everybody know their login to the website, every department head or department that uses it?
I believe so. I believe so, but we're gonna make sure that everybody knows what they have, is able to use it. And obviously, they can't have a legal meeting as of July one unless they post on the town website, and also with the clerk.
Really, so.
Legally not required, but nevertheless, the clerk also does, does posting in the building and on the window outside, so. Um, another meeting of the shared conservation agent session on May eleventh, uh, I'm asking the board if they would approve the estimate that you have in front of you for the, the radios for the two police cruisers. I know, I think you more or less agreed to it, uh, it's based on funds that are still available in that account, and uh, you've never, you haven't voted it, however.
I would, I would say, I'm not sure it actually needs a vote because that account is a corporate one, but in the interest of just making sure, out there, I'll entertain that motion.
So, well, second.
On favor of spending the police grant radio money on the additional radios.
Okay, the PVPC has hired a consultant to discuss economic development among the towns in the region, and um, I had a session, I participated in a session on the sixteenth, at the end, they ask you for the names of a couple of businesses, I mentioned this last week. That uh, they wanna call and just talk about economic development in the town, so.
Can say Gary and.
That's what I did.
Then we get to know that there was another session.
Yes, that was a surprise to me.
Yeah.
By the way, I wasn't on that, so maybe they considered the session that I participated in.
It looked like the address.
First half.
Different town planning departments.
Said selectman chair and planning chairs.
Yeah, yeah, most towns with planning, planning, planning.
Um, the cruiser that we're looking at to cycle down has ninety five thousand fifty six miles as of today. And question is, um, I did get an update from that uh, on the most recent mileage, and I got it also from the chief of police.
I looked at that thing, and I saw that the next cruiser after that is around forty six or so.
Yes.
So I don't really think there's a lot of good, I think a lot of good things could happen, giving a hundred thousand mile car kicked down to another department. I think we're looking at replacing the forty six in the fall, or probably as close as sixty, or in the high fifties, that'd make a lot more sense at that point.
It would.
Bones left on the car at that point.
Shelley's car has a hundred and fourteen thousand, according to the chief this morning, and it is falling apart.
What does falling apart mean, though, is it rotted out, rusted?
We didn't.
Not not passing inspection, or is it just old and it drives five thousand miles a year?
We didn't go very far into that, so.
And prior to, in years.
We can get a lot of money for trading on a cruiser.
I think he was, he was also saying that it's time, we're gonna have to spend some more money on this car.
Well, prior to approving a car for Shelley's use, she used her own car and we reimbursed her for it, I'm just saying, if we could limp along, build a town appropriate money replaced the fifty thousand mile cruiser, I think it would be better served for that purpose. Giving another hundred thousand, replace a hundred thousand, I think does a lot for us, and honestly, have we heard from the chief, when are we gonna get that replacement cruiser?
He's thinking July.
Really?
Yes, that's what he said to me this morning.
Yeah.
I quickly report from Mark, they asked about where the truck is that we ordered from them.
This, this cruiser is in Massachusetts, it needs to be outfitted, but the chief said to me this morning was that one company is now in near Monopoly and to do the outfitting, they built a separate garage to do it.
Okay.
And so it's a matter of waiting until this cruiser can get the lights and so forth.
Just spin up a white lettering one, so we're gonna flip over to white, I guess.
I guess.
So, and he on Mark reported, he checked on the new truck that we appropriated money for. Ford is canceling contracts with some towns for their trucks because of supply problem. That has not happened with this one yet.
Mm-hmm.
But he's still checking out, there's no delivery date, which obviously impacts the rolling of this one down the parks.
Mm-hmm.
Because that was what the board agreed, so.
Okay, um, so is it agreeable that we, we will not cycle this car down, but we'll wait till the fall and.
Revisit it in the fall.
Okay.
Well, I would say, I'm agreeable to not cycle this one down, but future.
Okay. I closed out the CARES Act and submitted vouchers for two hundred and sixty three thousand dollars. They've kicked back thirteen thousand dollars and said they don't want to pay for it, it's mostly for Zoom, and so I'm gonna argue with them tomorrow. I think they probably think that the town can use cable, I'm gonna make sure that they know that we were not using cable for our meetings, and that without Zoom, without the Zoom camera, without the TV and the microphone, we couldn't, we couldn't function during, uh, we couldn't function remotely during the worst period of COVID, when we had meetings that were, were all remote, so. Uh, I'm gonna argue with them tomorrow anyway, but I told Cliff, and not a big deal, we, we, we have a general fund budget to cover this if they refuse, so. Uh, the Graziano program on municipal vulnerability was very good last night. They talked about using uh, plantings and natural means to absorb water that would otherwise flow into the streams during severe weather events and cause flooding. Uh, it makes sense, it makes simple sense to the extent that your community is developed, and you have less of the kind of soil that can absorb rainwater. Uh, there's more rainwater that goes into the streams and contributes to flooding, and so in addition to the structural things we've talked about, culvert and so forth, uh, they're looking to uh, do plantings uh, that will absorb rainwater and reduce the incidence of flooding. We're now looking at two sites, Audubon, which is very agreeable and supportive, and more recently, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at Memorial Park and doing something adjacent to that little stream, so we're going to have a meeting there on the fifteenth of June to look it over and make an estimate as to whether or not, I'll give you the information on that, if you want to attend.
Well, I think it's, uh, because park land is strictly under the jurisdiction of the park commissioners, I think if you're gonna make an application, you need to make sure they attend.
And then lastly, um, nearly all of our departments are concerned that they're running out of storied space for paper. And I'm trying to focus on that and come up with uh, a, a plan that will work, that will reduce the amount of stored paper, meaning getting it scanned and getting it put into electronic files available on uh, on, on the laptop, or on the desktop computers. Um, obviously, MicroFich does that, uh, they'll do it for you, uh, some towns are actually getting the equipment and, and moving it from department to department. Uh, some towns are actually getting the equipment and, and moving it from department to department. They put it on a cart and you reel, wheel it into each department. And they allow each department to work several hours a week uh, to scan not only current files, but also to begin working on scanning uh, back files. And particularly the ones that we are not legally mandated to keep in paper format. Now, the clerk has to keep a lot in, in paper format, but other departments do not. And, and so if you look in these departments, what you're seeing is filing case, filing case, filing case and.
I know we heard from Wendell that one of the biggest problems is obviously plans.
Yes.
You know, and they're tough to scan.
Yeah.
And Dick mentioned that they wasn't the payroll records, it's been seven years.
You gotta keep them for a while. Yeah, I mean, some communities have these large format uh, copiers. Uh, they are expensive, but I think eventually that's a solution for the town. We might even try to get some grant money to buy one.
Well, it's part of one. I was on planning board. You were required to bring in five copies of an A and R.
Yeah.
You know, some for the registry, some for, God, there was a linen copy they had good on land for. You know.
So that's, that's the report. There's an update on grants there, but there's nothing new other than.
And of course, we did talk about the possibility if they have boxes they don't want to get rid of, can we store some that aren't burdens?
Yes.
Do they have a room or something there?
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Great. Anything else to come before the board?
Well, you're, so I'll move one second.
It'll get better, Don. It'll get better.
Got it.
We gotta bullshit it a second.
What was that?
First, before we close, I want to thank you, Don, boy, you've done the best of years. As a rookie, you were really, really good.
I get my.
And congratulations from your real life. You're round.
Was there a move to adjourn? I didn't.
Yes, yeah, we're good. Okay, thank you.